State Bank and Trust has been invested in Winfield and Marion County for more than a century, and today we remain deeply committed to meeting the needs of local families and businesses with excellent financial products and friendly down-home service.
But more than that, we're dedicated to supporting the growth, success, and well-being of our community as a whole. Because, when it comes right down to it, there's nothing more important than community.
And just like our outstanding city officials, police, and fire departments, you can count on State Bank and Trust to help make Winfield and Marion County a great place to live for everyone who calls this area home.
Hello, everyone. This is Chuck from Span Hardware in Winfield, Alabama. Good to be with you today. And just want to let you know, we've got some new things this year for the spring season. As you can see, steel now houses a longboard. We're going to have a full line of the steel zero-turn motors. We have a full line of the steel wheat trimmer and chainsaws. Just about anything you need to maintain your home this spring and summer, from lawn and garden equipment to paint to hardware, anything you need. Come see us. We'll help you if we can. Thank you.
This is Eric Simmons from Furniture Depot. We have a store in Gewin and Fayette. We've been serving the people of Northwest Alabama for 23 some-odd years. We'd like to be your furniture store if you'd let us. And we'd like to thank you for your business this past year and invite you to come and shop with us this coming year and for the years to come. Merry Christmas and have a happy new year.
Hello. Lee Hines here, owner-operator of Alexander's Heating and Air Condition.
We've been family-owned and operated since 1954, proudly serving Marion, Fayette, and Lamar County. We are carrier factory authorized dealers, but service all makes and models. We specialize in residential and light commercial HVAC systems.
So as we get ready to enter another hot Alabama summer, please remember Alexander's Heating and Air for all your HVAC needs.
Tom Bigby Electric Cooperative was formed for the need for electricity to the local citizens that were living in the rural areas of Marion, Lamar, and portions of Fayette Counties. This line consisted of 12 miles and 22 consumers on the road from Gewin to Sulligent. Between then and now, there has been a lot of hard work and dedication from a great number of people to make this cooperative what it is today. Tom Bigby Electric Corporation would like to thank each member. You can contact us today at (205) 921-6712.
Your story starts at Bevel State Community College. Whether you are just starting out or starting over, Bevel State has an opportunity that is right for you. With five locations serving seven counties, you don't have to go far to start your own success story. Plus, with tuition lower than four-year colleges, you won't need to spend more for a great education. Visit us online at bscc.edu to learn about your options for seamless academic transfer and high-demand career tech and health science offerings. Let us help you tell your story.
Enjoy our amazing on-site restaurant and bar with a lunch buffet every Sunday. Relax with a quick getaway with your family and make a splash in our outdoor pool. Book your next event with us. Call us at (205) 468-4625.
At Bowen Funeral Home, we understand the importance of a personal commitment to provide quality services and products with value to meet every family's need. You'll find very caring professionals that truly desire to offer dignified service and true value that families need and desire during the loss of their loved one. With our newly renovated facilities, services, and quality merchandise, you can rest assured that we stand ready to meet the needs of your family in honoring lives lived. Bowen Funeral Home is located at 981 Alabama Highway 253, just south of Winfield High School. Call Tommy Bowen, Certified Funeral Service Practitioner, at (205) 487-4327.
Father-in-law, we thank you for this day you've given us. Thank you for the many blessings. We just ask your guidance and direction in all we do in this council meeting. We thank you for each and every one here and pray for each and every one and their families. We continue to pray for the ones that are sick and want to hurt in some way. We ask you to give us our saints. Christ's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the fighting of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Like welcome everybody to July 25th, 2023, Winfield City Council meeting. Our item on the agenda is approved minutes for July 13th, 2023. I need to ask for motion for approved minutes. Nobody's got a question? It's coming in behind the bend of it. You can call it. Gina made a motion. James second all in favor. Next item on the agenda, we've got an open officer, council place number one. We leave that behind that Judge Daryl Burton and Mr. Larry Reese. Glad to have him as a junior council team here. Let you take over Daryl and I'll square him in.
Mayor, where do you want us?
I'll be right here on the center here, I guess. I will let you do it right here on the front.
Where would you get your picture?
Yeah, we'll try out there.
Awesome.
You want to stand up there?
I'll stand over here so you can get behind me and get in the picture in the background.
Let me get you, let me get you on the, yeah, this side because y'all really need to be in the picture more so than me because I'm the one that's getting sworn in. All right, let me get your left hand on the bottom. Let me get you to raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Larry Reese.
I, Larry Reese.
solemnly swear or affirm.
solemnly swear or affirm.
That I am eligible for the office of council member.
That I am eligible for the office of council member.
And will execute the duties of same.
And execute the duties of same.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And that I will support the constitutions.
And that I will support the constitutions.
And obey the laws of the United States and of the state of Alabama.
And will obey the laws of the United States and the state of Alabama.
That I will.
That I will.
In all respects.
In all respects.
Observe the provisions of the ordinances of the city of Winfield.
Observe the provisions of the ordinance of the city of Winfield.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of council member.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of council member.
So help me God.
So help me God.
All right, you're sworn in. Congratulations.
Thanks, Darrell. Thank you. Glad to have you, Larry. We're going now to the next item on the agenda is Greg Finn and, candidate House 16. I don't believe we've got anybody here or him here representing him. Anybody outside of the seat? Go to the next item on the agenda, item number four, award bids for Barres Street paving, resolution number 1352.
Luke was going to run a little bit late because he had to go to...
Should we skip that one? Next item on the agenda is park discussion of the surplus property, Slade View Equipment.
We've got two Gators that we'd have liked to put up for surplus. I think these Gators were down there when Mike was there and I think he used maybe one or two of them to drag fields with. They're, they're in pretty bad shape. The suspension on one of them is about to fall through. It's, it's split out. Clutch, tires, shocks, batteries. Carb, there's a gas tank in the back of one of them. It's a marine gas tank because the expense of buying a regular gas tank to put back on the, the Gator is, is pretty expensive. So you can't haul anything in the back of that one. The front ends wore out on that one also. These were all bought second-hand, probably 10 to 15 years ago. So we're asking permission to look at surplus and two of those and, and then possibly looking at buying two new ones, which would run us about $27,000. You know, in our budget, we had $12,000 for a Gator, which they had increased a little bit since we put that in. But we also had the $30,000 for a backhoe that we never bought. And we spent about half of what was budgeted for our truck. So we're asking if council would consider putting that $27,000 for two new. And we've got quotes. I think y'all got those. And Gina got them updated. We're, we're trying to buy the cheaper version of the Gators to have. Reggie has walked his legs off this summer down in the park. When you're running tournaments, you back out of house, something like that, get back and forth on them. Also consolidated the cooking for the concessions when we have tournaments. So the Gators use to run food up to the other concession stands in addition to working on the fields and taking garbage off with them and many other uses that they have in the park.
Does this seem kind of special, price?
It reflects the state bid price.
Is it state bid?
Can you see off on the first page, the discount there? That's the state bid discount.
Say that again, Gina.
If you look at the bottom of the first page, the $2,205.98 discount would be the state bid discount.
We've looked at other vehicles that might compare to these and, you know, the longevity is just not there like the quality of the John Deere Gator. Now, you probably find something a little less expensive, but these, these vehicles have seemed to hold up over time. There's not that much difference in the price.
What you've got, the two that you've got now, both of diesel or both of gas?
They're all diesel.
They're all diesel.
It's kind of a lot higher than a new car right now. The cover sheet, the first page that you have, those are the ones they can get right now.
They had another version that was about $2,000 more than that that they quoted as on first, but it's not available right now.
Which one of these are you talking about now?
The one that they have that they can get right now is the, the one on the first page, HVAC 615E. The eight and one is the diesel.
That's just a four-wheeling.
Four-wheel?
Yeah.
See, there's a bed dump on these. They're high-dogged.
I think you called it both.
I believe it is.
But it's tires or the last tires?
On the first page.
Manual, manual without, I think it's a manual.
That, that Kubota diesel version is, is basically a tractor. And they, they're amazing. Their longevity is fantastic. They got, you know, they've got a rotary engine in them. They're about the speed of the, they're about the speed of the Gator. You know, they won't, I think top speed on them is like 18 miles an hour. They're not like those Polaris's that get up 40s or whatever. They're way too fast.
They're also about $25,000.
They are?
Yeah.
What is a Kubota? How much?
One, one diesel Kubota is about $25,000.
What's, what you have y'all, is your board, your department board talk about gas versus diesel?
Yeah, from what, for what we use these for, I think the Gaspar's fine. And these lasted, the ones that we had lasted for 15.
They're probably five, six-year-old and young, I guess.
Yeah, they were used. Both of them were used.
I can doubt it's for what he's telling off the front end on that one. I seen the guys coming down the street. Well, actually, they drove in at the bulk of them. I didn't realize it. I thought they just had had a problem. They've been driving like that. Looks like.
Daniel Tibble worked on one or two of these back when he was an auto mechanic and tried to fix them. It didn't, it didn't hold up. And you take them to the John Deere dealer to try to get worked on, you're going to spend about half of what it's worth for buying a new one.
My recommendation to the council, we allow them to go ahead and purchase those two cash. Put them both two for surplus. They've got the use out of them. They use them daily. And I know they use them today. Can I make a motion? Gina second all in.
Let go.
I'm on that deal.
Yeah, I'm sure it seems to be a surplus.
They don't, they don't support surplus for two old.
Then I'm surplus no longer needed until you get to the new one or so. Or should it be about the new one being in surplus?
You want to keep the old ones. I mean, we're going to keep those for the new until you get the new ones. You said they had those in stock, did you?
That way you get them and those are just either coming in.
Okay. I'm going to, I'm going to redirect that motion and that the way we voted is to go ahead and purchase these and then we'll bring it back up to surplus of those. Everybody okay with that?
These new ones will make the old and surplus equipment, but that man did not. We're still needing them.
Church, preaching, everybody go to talk. Next item on the agenda is the sale of surplus property, resolution number 1353. That's going to be the pickup truck that the city was using. They were using that truck doing mechanical problems or issues with it. And we put it up. Y'all, council voted for Mike to put that on Doug deals. He's done that and he has got a bid turned in on that. Let me see what you got there. He, this is, this is an inspection form that he fills out when he puts something on Doug deals and anything that he knows wrong with it, that he can visualize or the county knows wrong with it. He puts it in here and then, of course, they send pictures of it, puts the amount of mileage or whatever. And we have made a wire in the, in that when we put it out, the repairs needed was transmission and, and the rear end being replaced. I mean, that, that sort of every little bit on that, on that unit knows ahead of time what it needs. We had kind of come together on a, a reserve that we put on for $1,800 reserve on. We'll be something going forward on this. That's going to be what that bid was. To be able to go to Aspen and accept that bid. It did reach a reserve, set a reserve, set $1,800. It didn't reach it.
Decide whether we're going to do that first before we give them the numbers.
Kind of what I'm going to make sure of. Oh, number out there. You know, we set a reserve on this truck. It's a 2005 F-152 wheel drive pickup. I'm sure all else from here that wouldn't you say Ricky using to pick up garbage on the side of the street with. Like I said, needs transmission, rear end. What 18-year-old, they put 18-year-old truck. Assett to regard that as a reserve, a little bit high at $1,800. Before I tell you what this bid was, I need to know if you're going to accept the fact the reserve may be a little high on it. I just need to know if you're going to re-list it with a paper, the local paper, or if you're going to go ahead and take, I guess, the bid that we got offered. You just had one bid, didn't you?
Well.
That was a high bid.
That was a high bid. There were, there were actually only four total bids received. Three of those were by the same person. He did it himself first two times.
I speak same. For work and there's only three vehicles. He had to bid against himself one time.
He raised a bid an hour, his second bid an hour after his first. Nobody even went into it.
Yeah, I speak same. Make the math work. He had to bid against himself at least once.
I like people on eBay like that. Try to have bids yourselves. Some people like it and vote. Lose track of this tournament is. That's a never-ending battle. Trying to beat yourself on bids. Oh, Lordy. A lot of them have their bids on.
I can see all the way down the roof. Just can see that.
I'm going, we'll go ahead and, I'm going to ask the council probably to accept the bid that we've got. Sometimes we'll be bored to set a reserve. I don't think they really kind of wants to set reserves. I set the reserve at $1,800. The high bid on it was $1,050. I need to ask probably for motion, my recommendation for you to go ahead and accept that. Accept that $1,050 bid on resolution of 1353. Who second? I think all in favor.
Mayor just had the high bidder, since he did not reach reserve, is not required to take the truck. We put it back to him, but the ball's in his court at this point. He thinks he wants it.
I mean, those.
It may be four or five.
All right, next item on, let's see, let's go ahead and we'll jump right back up here to number four since Luke's here. Bid on Barres Street, Street Paving. We need to accept this resolution, but I guess we need to probably go over this. But Luke, come up there and see if anybody's got that bid, that tabulation that he's got in here includes parking lots. We got two people that actually bid on, I guess, the Barres stick on the central asphalt. These total bids includes everything, but?
Yes, parking lots and the streets.
Okay. If you will, right quick, let Luke kind of explain to the council what you're coming up for, parking lots. Is that what?
All right, these, the parking lots are the, it's a hospital is one of them. And then you've got this whole, I call it the mule day area. This, this whole area right down here across the street. And then you have the middle school of Winfield. I think that was all kind of sponsored all by the Chamber. And we, we separated it because we thought the parking lot prices might jack up the prices of the asphalt. Turns out we all got the same bid. So what we'll do is when, as we do it, we'll just keep up with how much is on their parking lots and then how much is on the street. Keep it all separate. At the end, there's, there are a couple items like mobilization, construction fuel, which we'll, tally or divide those up based on the amount that, of the total contract. If that makes any sense. There's some streets that you can see from the map, the streets we added are, are have on here. I think that we probably will want to add some. There's some that left off, like the park, just so that we didn't jack up the, that didn't raise the price up. What we can do is go back and put that on there. What we can do is go back and put that on there at the end.
Can I ask for?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Can we take a street off and add one as well?
We can do whatever you want to force the council, and then you add, you know...
When you want me to make that?
Well, I would like to have a discussion before you ask for us to change it, make sure that everybody's on board. Kind of explain to us what streets you want to take out and what streets you want to add.
Eagle Street appears to have been paved in the last five years.
Eagle?
Yeah. Just the very back one off across the street, I think when we did, uh...
You told him over by, off the foothill?
Yeah. Where you turn off foothill. There's a section about fifty feet that needs some asphalt on it, but the rest of it looks perfect. I mean, it looks good. And it does look like it's been done the last five, six years.
I figure we did, I figure we did when we did, uh, foothill.
Better what it could have, but I can't say putting asphalt down on the top.
What was the distance of that?
Uh, I don't remember how, how much it was, but last year Bryant Street was on our list, and estimate on it, it was twenty-four thousand dollars. So I think it's a fair spot to do Bryant, still Eagle.
Now, that, uh, aren't, aren't we getting everything, putting all the streets included down there behind the Baptist Church? How about if we stop asphalt where it is new, and that way we'll have the whole area complete down there. Pick up on Eagle where you're talking about, that's a new asphalt stop. We pick it up, and that way we'll have that whole area done, and I think we still can add Bryant Street.
You mean do it, seventy-five-foot section?
Right.
And then Bryant, we thought it'd need as much. I'll go along.
If, if y'all would give me a budget and then give me the roads, like in order of what you want to add after we get so far, I can keep up with it. And, you know, we've done this a little, but we didn't end up doing this last couple of years, we had money left over.
Yeah, I think you'll have inspection Bryant on last year's workups already.
Okay.
Because it was on the list, and we, for some reason, didn't do it.
The main thing I need tonight is just to award the low bidder centralized filing. They do let me know that that would be starting sometime in September, which I'm gonna suggest we wait till after mule day's over, if they're gonna be. So that we don't mess up a mule day, if that's okay with y'all.
Part of me, because they usually come in gone in three days.
Yeah, well, this is gonna take a little bit longer, but yeah, they, they told me it'd be in August, so...
Well, I'll tell you why. I think the people at New Lake would rather be on this old asphalt in September than had brand-new black asphalt.
Right.
Because there's gonna be twenty degrees difference out there.
I don't think there's any way we'll get that on the mule day.
I don't mind if they don't own asphalt and own the new asphalt. Just my opinion. Yeah, and you hate for the shovels to make, you know, scuff up that new asphalt, too.
No, the mule's gonna go through there.
Oh, that's right, you're right. There'll be a lot of marking and remarking for the, for the block.
Yeah, we don't want that on the new asphalt.
It's gonna be a lot hotter, too.
I think we got, I think we got a good price on what we're getting done.
But whenever they can do it, I would say.
We have, but...
Let's don't tell them they can't.
I'd like to ask the council to give a motion to second to award this bid to the low bidder. Which is gonna be central asphalt. About, about a hundred and eighty thousand, a hundred and seventy-five miles left. I think that's, the way I would look at it, I mean, which everybody looks at everything different, but... If you didn't have it for one bid, it's not even...
Two hundred thousand dollars.
Huh?
Hundred eighty-nine, hundred eighty-nine thousand dollars.
Hundred two hundred thousand dollars difference, I mean, if you didn't have that one bid, you know, he's gonna do paving, that's probably what we'd have to do for it, except the high bid, that one bid. I got a motion from James in the second to keep second all in favor. I'll tell them we're ready when they go a little bit.
All right, thank you.
The next item on the agenda is, uh, we're sitting here to discuss the police jurisdiction. Uh, we have, we discussed this before, if the council can remember that, uh, legislation had a feeling, had a, I guess we'll call it, a feel in place to draw, if certain filings wasn't done, you got a copy of it. Okay. Let me just bring this, what was sent to us on July the eighteenth. I'm gonna send Morse code first. This was the first.
Well, it was included with the letter from the league, I already felt like what?
Municipal official, if you're receiving this message, you've already been contacted by the Alabama Department of Revenue notifying you that your municipality may no longer collect revenue in the police jurisdiction as a result of changes made by Act Number twenty twenty-one dash two ninety-seven. The law prohibits any municipality from continuing to collect revenue in its police jurisdiction outside of the corporate limits if an annual report including an accounting of all revenues collected by the municipality within the police jurisdiction during the previous fiscal year was not timely filed. Without the ability to collect revenue in your police jurisdiction outside of the corporate limits, it may be monetarily infeasible and no longer justifiable to your local taxpayers to provide service to those located within the police jurisdiction. This is, this is a letter from the league to us. Have y'all got a copy of this letter? One option the municipality has is reduce or otherwise eliminate your police jurisdiction outside of the corporate limits as allowed by law. Section eleven dash forty dash ten of Alabama Code allows any municipality by orders to eliminate or reduce its police jurisdiction outside the corporate limits by half a mile increments. The municipality eliminated or reducing its police jurisdiction shall send written notice to the county commission, no letter to the other state following its adoption of the ordinance. If you're considering eliminating your police jurisdiction effective January twenty twenty-four, you must have an ordinance in that effective place by, before October first, twenty twenty-three, and provide the county commission with a notice, with a notice. Keep in mind that the reduction of your police jurisdiction and the discontinuation of any service in your police jurisdiction can be only be done every two years. This means if you decide to reduce your police jurisdiction rather than eliminate it, or to discontinue some services rather than all, the issue cannot be considered again until two years later. They sent a sample letter to the fact. Basically, what, what happened is, is for the lack of whatever reason, not taking the notice, it's not because it wasn't in the norm, it's something new, for whatever lack, for whatever reason, not doing the filing with the Department of Revenue, they have pulled the rights to collect taxes inside our police jurisdiction outside our city limits, that's in our police jurisdiction. So that being said, we, we cannot legally, they're saying we cannot legally collect sales tax, is it, is it sales and use tax? Sales and use tax from any of the businesses outside corporate limits that's in police jurisdiction. I'll give you a couple of examples. Turkey Creek down here off County Road twenty-four in Fayette County is one of them. Probably Belmont Sand and Gravel and All-Star Sand and Gravel and Red McUSA up here off one twenty-nine. Those are in police jurisdiction, but not in this corporate, city corporate limits. Those are two that we can't collect from. Now, as far as residential areas, I think our police, with the red chair, our police jurisdiction goes all the way to County Road thirty-four south. If you're familiar with County Road thirty-four is down below, uh...
Two miles past Bedlam School.
Yeah, past Woldy Home, it's on past Woldy Home, next pay road, uh, past the church, home down. But yeah, past Woldy Home, be on, next pay road to the left, that way. And then our police jurisdiction going east, or going west stops.
At, uh, we don't go into Gwin.
Back this side of the, uh, sandwich produce, top of the hill. Going north...
Uh, the twin side.
That's the twin. And going east...
Seventy-two. But now the, the fire department goes a little further than that.
And then going south on one seventy, where I said it goes down to thirty-four.
But then you got like one twenty-nine, that you get someone that's not in the city limits, like...
Not in between. We got corporate limits at the interstate, but there's in, in between there and, and down here off one eighteen, we don't have. You know, we got people that's inside those limits, like on County Road, County Road sixty-three, for instance. How far up sixty-three y'all, up the bridge?
Uh, no, we go right there to the bridge. We don't cross the bridge.
Overpass?
Yeah.
And then on, uh, one forty-four, on the left side of one twenty-nine. Thirty-eight.
You talking about the dead end?
No, it comes back around by Chris Barn and Georgia and Alhoub, I think.
Uh, well, it'll cover all that.
But it's outside the corporate limit?
Yes, yes.
One seventy-three over here, back towards Sandlands Crossing, up to forty-seven. Thirty-one over here, past, uh, turn right, thirty-one passed.
When you go across the tracks, uh...
Starts the police jurisdiction, but not the city limit. Go to the edge of Glen Island. So, what we're up against is, I, I feel like the, the reasoning behind, and I can only, I, I just, I'm not, of course, in favor of us not providing service in that police jurisdiction. But for the safety of the people, and it's not necessarily the revenue, but there's two parts to it. The revenue that you're not gonna be able to collect, and then providing service to the citizens that's in that area, in our police jurisdiction. Because they get, they have, you, just, just for instance, northern Fayette County comes within a mile right here. But only, if you don't have police protection in, down as we're saying, as far as we do, I mean, the rural, people in the rural area don't have enough protection, in my opinion, to start with. Fayette County Sheriff's Department cannot cover all the rural area. And if we take, take away our, our police and fire to the northern part, that's not in, outside of city limits, but it's in our jurisdiction, there's gonna be several people just this way, that I'm just thinking this way, not counting these other directions. I'm looking at this way, because I know Fayette County, Marion County Sheriff's Department can't cover everything. And I feel like it's her putting more of a burden on our sheriff's departments and our volunteer fire departments if we must have pulled that fire department. According to the league, I mean, I may have changed it since, since we've talked, Todd, you might correctly come wrong, but according, one letter come from the league, uh, one email to come from them, is we're not insured if we go inside that area when we're not, when we're not, you know, it's according how we adopt this order to act, correct?
Well, that's, that, there's, that's been said. I, I, I don't think we've, I don't think we've actually been given that ultimatum or told that directly, but that is a possibility that we may face.
But as it stands right now, on that part, discussing about the insurance, if Winfield Fire Department goes to you and to assist over there, I believe their insurance is going with them. If y'all on a pursuit, assist, and have to go into another town, I believe it goes with you there, too.
You talking about if, if we're called?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have to be called.
Yeah, but your insurance would carry you there.
Correct.
So, you know, you see what I'm saying?
I see what you're saying, and, and the reason that's, it's not a black and white answer, I can't give you a yes or no, is because technically they can want to do that, but the earliest we could abolish the police jurisdiction is January one, twenty twenty-four.
Right, as we pass, knock over twenty twenty-two.
Yeah, that's the earliest we can abolish it. And, and so, you know, I mean, it's not like we, we can't, we can't collect revenue anymore immediately. So if they say, well, if you can't collect revenue, we're not gonna provide coverage, well, you can't do that, because the law's very clear. We cannot abolish it or even...
Should stop doing what we're doing right now?
Go smaller in a half mile increment until January one, twenty twenty-four.
That's coming up.
Well, it's five months away.
I might could shed a little light on this with the council, it's made a permission to do so. Y'all know what I'm saying? I was made aware of this by accident during session one day, during the regular session earlier this year. Sitting there, and there was a long debate going on about something, and I had to look down at my phone and start looking at a couple of news articles, and I saw the original article online that said there's a hundred and twenty-eight municipalities in the state that had failed to meet the qualifier or not qualify, but the deadline to report the issues we're discussing about right now, how many police calls you make out of jurisdiction, how many fire calls you make, and how much revenue is there in which you collect. So I realized that I had two in my district, Winfield and Hackenburg. So you and I talked, talked Mayor Cogan at Hackenburg, also talked to the mayor of Detroit, but that didn't affect him because they don't have a police department, but they do have a volunteer fire department. But to get back to Winfield, what I did, I went to meet with attorneys upstairs that day and had them draft a very simple bill. Because the, the deadline to meet the registration to continue to, uh, collect sales tax revenue and use tax out in your police jurisdiction was March first of twenty twenty-three. So what I tried to do was to get, uh, one, I changed one thing, I just changed the date to March first of twenty twenty-four, and was gonna try to get that bill passed so we could avoid a little bit of this. Well, I won't, I won't mention the senator by name, we've got television cameras rolling, and some of y'all probably already know who that is, and if not, I'll share it with you after the meeting. Uh, he was the one that drafted the bill in a special session in November of twenty twenty-one when the legislature met to, uh, begin to attempt handling the prison issue in our state. So he got that bill passed that started opening the door for elimination of police jurisdictions. So he and I discussed this, I explained to him I had two, two communities in my district this, this would impact. Uh, he was very pliable about it and let me know I could get it through the House and it would be dead on arrival in the Senate. And I called his name, I said, how can you be so confident? He said, because I'm chairman of the committee that'll have to go through, and Todd knows how that works. For those of you who don't know, chairman of the committee in the legislature, let's say Tim's the chairman of the committee, and a bill comes before him he doesn't like, he can trash it. He doesn't even have to show it to the members of his committee. That's how much power a chairman in the legislature have. And so I, I didn't say plead my case, but I continued to discuss my case. And so I went to the chairman over the same committee in the House, who is very good friends with the chairman of the committee in the Senate. And we worked for several days, and the league municipalities helped us do some research. Of the hundred and twenty-eight towns impacted roughly thirty percent were actively providing services for taxes collected. So I thought, okay, there we've got our, so I had an amendment to my own bill drafted saying that we would only extend to March first, two thousand twenty-four. That extension would apply only to municipalities who were currently providing services, which to me seems fair. If you're not providing the service, why should you get an extension to continue taxes for which you're offering no service? Couldn't get that passed him either. And so I, I won't share details, um, I will talk to y'all individually, anybody that's interested, after meeting, and explain to you something I'm working on for next year, and I'm hoping we can remedy this problem. I won't make any promises, because it's gonna, it's gonna take a Herculean effort, I think, to get it done, but I'm not gonna say that it's impossible. So hopefully, if we're successful, this will be a moot point, but as Todd knows more so than I do, there's a time between now and the next legislative session. this body has issues they have to address. But I did want you to know that we did everything we could to avoid this, and one person had enough power to kill him. Matter of fact, Mayor Culver and Kenny Altmark, his police, you've made a trip to Montgomery, you sit down with that senator, because they said it was very cordial, but would not budge for him, them either. And so, uh, we're gonna continue working it, I think I may have another way of working around that person, and see if we can pull that off, but, um, don't give a hope yet, I just know you have some discussions and decisions you have to make in the interim of the ward.
Appreciate that, Tracy. But the reason I put this on the agenda is, is I, I'd like to go a little bit further, appreciate Tracy's efforts, but they didn't work. You know, it, it's like he said, if one man's got enough power to keep it from happening, and that's what happened. I don't think it's constitutionally right the way they did it, um, the way it happened, because of somebody having power in a certain position in Montgomery. I feel like, I would like to ask the council, I talked to Todd a good bit about this, and Todd's, uh, is, I won't say on board, but he's, he's willing to go forth with the effort with me, if I can get the council on board for me to challenge this with the Department of Revenue that is unconstitutional. I can let Todd get a little bit further into discussion with that, but I, I feel like that, uh, we've been done unfairly. I feel like that this, that the, the best interest of the people that's in a police jurisdiction that does give provided service, as, 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 as he has said, there's thirty, this thirty, thirty municipalities out of a hundred and twenty-eight that provide service, and we're one of them. They're not, they're not, you know, they may use the phrase taxation about representation, but we, we make representation, we're there, we do service, we, we're providing a service for the people, and I don't think that we need to pass any kind of ordinance taking away that service from those people. It's not about the revenue as much as it is the protection of citizens that's outside, that's in the police jurisdiction. Todd, if you wanna, uh, elaborate a little bit with about what we can do and what we might be working on doing, you know, I'd love for you to do that.
Well, I, I, after talking with the mayor, and I've been contacted by several attorneys from different municipalities, and I'd be interested in asking, Tracy, I'm not familiar with the list from top to bottom, but I think this is a, I, I think I can safely say this, most of the adversely affected municipalities in Alabama are small rural municipalities.
I would say that's the very fairest one.
Okay, and I had a, I had a comment part on the phone with a guy the other day, because he was asking for, and I'm making a point here, this is not necessarily about this, but I'm making a point, he was asking for a response to something he sent to me as the attorney for the city of Winfield, that was gonna require employees of the city of Winfield to go to some Herculean efforts to find documents, find paperwork, find the, and make copies of it and send it to him. And he said, have you got that done yet? And I said, no, I haven't, and he said, well, you've had plenty of time, and I said, no, I haven't, no, I haven't. And he said, yeah, you know, he said, the law, the law says you gotta raise one by the time. I said, okay, what is reasonable? You're, you're calling from Jefferson County, City of Birmingham, you got a records department, you've got employees that all they do all day long is go in that records room, stand in front of that Xerox machine, research, make copies, and send it out.
And that's the very point I tried to make.
I said, if I ask the city of Winfield to do that, the city clerk, who's got other duties, the treasurer who's got other duties, or somebody else who's busy forty hours a week doing something else, has gotta stop that, just to get you paperwork. So what's reasonable for the city of Winfield, as far as time, is far different than what is reasonable for Birmingham.
You're exactly right.
Okay, that's a problem, because if you look at this list, it is inordinately large percentage of people like Winfield who don't have full-time legal staff that looks at everything that comes from ALDOR. Okay, is this something we need to act on, we need to act on it today or whatever? No, it comes to people that got everything else in the world to do, other than answer stupid questions that the Department of Revenue is gonna ask, because some senator got beat in his body. Okay, now, you're in a different situation than I am, I can call this ass, I, I'm sorry, that's ridiculous, it's absolutely ridiculous.
I don't disagree with anything you say.
Okay, it is, and he's gotta be in his body, he's mad at somebody, he's trying to prove a point, and it, and, and that's what, that's what's going on, and we're caught in the middle. And we got both sides telling us, we got one side telling us, well, here's what you can do, and we're gonna pull you coverage if you try to, you know, or we're gonna do this, and we're caught in the middle.
As you said, he represents a primarily municipal area.
Baldwin County?
And I tried to explain to him that life there and life in House District seventeen are daylight and dark.
Baldwin County, and, and since this happened, his, his municipality has grown by leaps and bounds, because all these people that were outside the JD are now annexing, and they're now, they're now the number two.
And therefore.
In the state, that's what it's all about, Tracy, that's what it's all about.
I wasn't gonna say it.
Okay, well, I'm saying, I don't care, I ain't elected, I, I'm just, I'm just tired.
In our discussions, I kept saying, what about this, and he would say, well, they can annex in, I said, you don't understand, in my district, not everybody wants to be within the corporate limits. And he said, well, but that's how your town grows, I said, there's other ways, and then I had, he come back and he said, well, you can force them in, and I said, not in my district.
Well, that's what they basically did down there.
I said, my people, my council would never do that, I said, they give the cases on occasion, the people freely and willfully come and petition to be asked in, but I would never spend anything that would try to strong-arm anybody into a corporate limit, ever.
Well, I mean, it, we've seen, we see it every day, it is the destruction, destroying small-town America. Bigger's better, that's what everybody thinks, so they want everybody to, they want, they want two or three municipalities to grow across the state to where everybody's just in these, that's what they want. Okay, that's what they got, and I'm sorry, that's who he's elected to represent, but he ain't elected to represent me, and he don't give a rat's, you know what, about City of Winfield.
Well, I promise you, I'm working on something for the twenty-fourth session.
And so, that is not fair, it's not fair to us. Okay, fairness is big, is a big deal, and I, without saying too much about where, where I think we can go, fairness is important.
I reached across the aisle, you and I discussed it after the meeting, and got another gentleman in the Senate from the opposing party across the aisle, uh, in an effort by a partisanship who was eagerly anxious to help me. We could've won that battle, I believe, couldn't we get it to the Senate floor? But as I said earlier, when one man controls what goes through his committee, that, that, it wasn't, like I said, it wasn't for a lack of effort, and we tried multiple anger, angles on this thing, and could I have gotten it to the Senate floor? It's probably a totally different issue, but when one person can block it from ever getting even discussed by the committee, much less to the full Senate, my hands were tied, and I apologize to the mayor, to the mayor and council for that, but I can promise you it wasn't for lack of effort.
Well, I, I tell people every day that, that fair and equal ain't the same thing.
No.
You treat me equal or you treat me fair, equal is hard, equal's hard sometimes. Don't treat me like you treat Jefferson County or Birmingham, that ain't fair, treat me fairly. And so these, these small municipalities have been treated unfairly, and that's a very strong legal argument, treating us unfairly because of who we are and, and the size of communities we are. Don't treat us, don't treat us, it's an protection argument, it's a, it's a discrimination argument, and there, I, I think that's your, without, like, going into too much detail, I think that's where you got to go, and you got to all team up as one big group of communities and go down there, because Winfield, by our sound, we ain't got nothing, but, uh, you put enough of us together, and you go down there, and then all of a sudden, folks might stand up.
And I can promise you, having worked with, there's enough members of the, members of the legislature that would stand behind their local municipalities, that would strengthen the body we're talking about putting together even more.
I, I'm, I'm convinced that I've gotten, in, in three days, I've gotten, my phone's just run off the hook, because people have heard that, that we're willing to, we're, we may be potentially willing to go that route, and they wanna jump in there with us, yeah, so.
Well, thank you for your effort.
But where we're at now.
We still gotta go back with this on right now.
Oh, as a, as a first responder.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm in a catch twenty-two, and this is what I went to Todd about, because I, like you, Mayor, do not look to, the citizens are the one that's paying, because they're not gonna have the coverage, they're not gonna have the police coverage, they're not gonna have the fire coverage. On the other side of that sword, in the event that something does happen, or where my guys have to use lethal force or something of the nature, they may not be covered. So I went to Todd and said, wh- where am I at?
Well, as I, as I read the law, we got to adopt October one, to adopt an ordinance. If we're going to abolish it, or, or, or whatever, we got it to October one, it doesn't affect, take effect till January, so we've got a thirty day, I mean, ninety day when the, that we can consider it and discuss it and decide what we wanna do.
Should this body choose to take the action or discussing, does that not suspend that date of October one, or is it still hard in front of them?
Uh, it's hard in front of them, because that's in the statute, that's not in this law, that is in the police jurisdiction statute. That, that, that quoted this, I mean, that is in the, in the statute, that's, and that's been around forever, that's the statute that allows us to expand and create a jurisdiction. Uh, before, once you, but once you do it, here again, once you do it, before you can abolish it, you gotta give notice, you gotta be fair.
But you see where I was going with that.
I, I understand that, but that's, that's my point.
Yes, sir.
Before, but, once we've done it, before we can take it away from people, we've got to do certain things, because we gotta be fair. We can't just yank the rug out from under, we gotta be fair. So if we have to be fair in what we're doing about the jurisdiction, why can't, why don't we have to be treated fairly? I mean, really, you know, I, I, that's my point, I, I just think that's just, you know, that's where we go, I just think that's the argument, so.
So what I'm asking is the council to allow me to, to go further with trying to work with Todd and work with these other municipalities to, get this before, have somebody that can make a decision to say that this was not constitutional the way it's done. I need that's the motion, and that's like, to allow me to do that, James, they all in favor, on Todd. We're, you know, right's right, wrong's wrong, you know, there's a lot of these, there's some big barriers you don't wanna go up against, and some times you have to, whether you want to or not. And I feel like that's where we're at, and this, the way this has went down, I don't, I, I don't want to place blame on, yeah, definitely not placing blame on, on, on any legislator that tried to fight it or whatever, and, and that took, took, and tried to get it extended when it happened, but the way that it all happened was not done right, it's all, just like he said, when I started explaining to him, Daryl, I made an effort and went down there, it's just, they, he knew it was a wasted trip for him before they ever got there.
He didn't wanna hear it, to care less what they had to say.
Well, I'll just tell, with the whole body of this, and either you and or Todd, when the time comes, Todd, you feel it's appropriate, you'd like me to get involved and assist, just let me know what I can do.
Yeah, we, we appreciate that, they, uh, I should.
You know.
I guess I won't be on his Christmas list this year, well, I.
Well, I'm not already, get behind me, brother. I can, I can, I, I, I'm content.
Yeah, just go ahead, go to the next one.
I appreciate that, we did vote in all in favor. Take care of it, Todd.
I appreciate y'all, bye. Well, I've looked on this list, and, and, and seven of these towns on here, I, I, I've had phone calls from it the last two to eight, seven. You know, which is my word of mouth, not even an announcement, just, you know, seven, so it's, yeah, it's rough, it's hard.
If this were to get out and get picked up, with all due respect, our local media, by somebody at AL.com, which I could arrange, you'll get a lot more from us.
Oh, yeah.
Until you let me know.
Okay, you ain't gonna have to.
I don't figure out what it is, but.
I mean, it's, it's, there's a lot, but there's more about that, now, we need to go to the next one.
Next time, you can just open this, uh, Jamie.
Uh, you starting over? This isn't really open, is it? It is, and it's not, but, you know, I'd like to see Mike, or whoever, go back to the city records, make the list of the roads and the year that they were paved. So when we do our list, we won't be making the mistake we're doing tonight, and having not paved the road that's been paved.
I don't know how that one section, little section, easily even got.
Well, you know, that's, that's, that's beside the point, but I'd still like to have a list of the last least five years of roads of when they were paved, because there are roads around here that haven't been paved in fifty years.
She got it.
I know for a fact.
I just gotta put in some better order for you, but I haven't.
Okay.
I mean, I gotta, I keep the list, I'm not sure, because like I tell everybody, when you go, you know, every city street's on my, I mean, I'm not, I, I just try to do them in order, traffic, bus, ball, you know, garbage truck, I try to do them in order to, where, where that's the most benefit for the, the biggest, you know, it's no, no particular, I try to, I try to go this way, I try to go that way, I try, I try to go every, every direction, you know, it's not, some of them are a little worse than others, but some of them don't get traveled near what the others do. But every, it's like I tell them, you know, I've never seen so many people mad about streets getting paved, and it's, they, when you're doing work, and it don't, it's not that street that gets paid, so that, so they're not, it's coming, your street's coming, if it needs it, it's coming, I mean, it's just a matter of time, and I think we've made real good progress in the last, uh, eight, ten years of, of, of sticking to what we said, we're gonna take care of the roads, is what we've been doing, uh.
Well, we, we're doing one of them now, I mean, we're, we're doing some roads that hasn't been done in fifty years.
But the way I've told them, though, before we started, there was none with asphalt on them, zero, other than a state highway. They all had chip and seal, they got asphalt now, not chip and seal. Well, it's a, it's a whole different ballgame.
Well, chip and seal fifty years ago was better than chip and seal today.
Well, I, I don't, I don't disagree with that, uh, yeah, every street's on it, but, but James has got that list, and I got, I got it in the back of, I keep the list in the front seat of my pickup. Uh, you got anything else, Jamie?
That's all, that'd be enough.
We'll ask you next week if you got anything.
Thank you, y'all, man.
All right, Tim? Tim, I got that, let me jump in there quick, like, on this traffic light situation. They, they's not been, only in passing, is, somebody may mention if I'm at to eat breakfast or lunch at a restaurant or whatever, somebody may bring up, wouldn't you, you know, when's the red light, you know, because it's all, it's a, it's a talking point, and people like to have a talking point about certain things at certain times or whatever, and they might not bring it into anybody that, that might could answer that question, and before us getting phone calls and complaints about this, I, I, maybe, which, I get, my phone rings all the time, believe it or not, some, you know, sometimes, Jim, I say, well, you don't ever answer it, but I, I, I know I get calls, but I have not had no calls with somebody wanting to call and complain, because I feel like that everybody that watches this council on, on, on Facebook and on the, uh, China, uh, that airs it on TV, and in the paper, which I, I don't know why, I just now realized papers in here tonight, uh, we, but I believe Tracy gets calls on it, I believe, uh, ALDOT says they get calls on it, but it's, 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 there's so many components involved in that, that there again, I'm not gonna lay the blame on anybody, but I'm not gonna take the blame for the reason the lights is not being put up yet, because there's too many moving parts in it, too many different people involved in it, and it's got to be, anytime you've got multiple groups and multiple people trying to get them all together at the same time, is, is virtually impossible, if you can get somebody that, that's willing to do the work and can pull off the jobs that they've got going on to do the work. Uh, they have set a date, again, uh, to be started or complete by September eleventh, that's what they tell me, that's what, that's the date. Now, everybody said, well, we've heard that before, we've heard that before, but believe it or not, even still now, there's, there's more than one ALDOT department that's, that's, that's with it, it's not just this, uh, the ALDOT that handles this district, it's also, Fed, ALDOT, it's different groups of ALDOT that's involved, it's not just. It's not just this, uh, the Aldoc that handles this district, it's also, Fed Aldoc, it's different groups of Aldoc that's involved, it's not just one. They have to communicate with each other, which has to, but, we're on standby, I mean, for us, the city and the council, we've done our part. We've okayed everything, and we're, we're, we, we paid the insurance to have it insured to be fixed when something happens to it. So there's, there's nothing, there's nothing in this group body that can hold it up, I mean, there's no, there's no way. And I'm not, I'm not going to blame it on Aldoc, because you got a insurance company, and you, that has hired a consultant that has to go through, and you got a, a, what I'm gonna call an erecting company that has to put it up, an electrical company, they probably twenty or twenty-five different parts of this, different people that's involved to make it right, you know, to make it happen. Go ahead, Tracy.
Can I add something to that, too?
Yes.
Um, like, yeah, I find, I did get, you know, phone calls come in, you'll hear something five days in a row that you won't hear again for three weeks. And so finally, a couple of weeks ago, I got on the phone and got in touch, and in fact, I called Gina to ask her if she might have the number of the, the consultant. So I called the consultant directly, and spoke with him, and, and, well, I shouldn't say this, I left a message the first time, I must have sounded a little bit rough, because the gentleman that's actually gonna be doing the work, is, I, I know him through other projects, and, he called me and said, "Listen, I've got you on a, a conference call with a consultant who said you chewed his blank out on a voicemail earlier today," and I kind of chuckled, I said, "I didn't think I was that rough." I said, "It's just the people in my hometown are pretty upset, and they're ready to get this done." I said, "You've got nineteen months to get it finished." And so, long story short, the con, the consultant, myself, and the guy that's gonna supposedly do the work, uh, had a long conference call that went extremely well. Uh, the guy that's gonna be doing the work is tied up right now with several school-related projects, and actually, the school's starting in the next two or three weeks. He was asking, did we, did we think that could be given priority so he could get out of their way? And I said, "Well, you're asking the wrong man, I said, "You need to call the mayor." Um, but I can't, I will, I will speak on your behalf, this is not the mayor and council's fault, it's not Aldoc's fault. Um, I was coming back from a trip the other day and got a call from Aldoc, and that's, that's kind of what got me even more stirred up, was when they were saying if something weren't done in a, quote, reasonable period, they were gonna come take the existing ones down, put up wooden poles and stream lines like they used to have and be done with it. And I explained to them, on many different levels, how that would not be acceptable in this community, that people beyond just the mayor and the council had worked to get those put up, that we'd had, you know, private foundation involved and others. And, and the gentleman found I was extremely pleasant on this, I understand he wasn't threatening or anything, just being honest. And, uh, so I spoke to him again yesterday, or no excuse, Friday. I had the conference call with the consultant and the contractor on Thursday. And at that point, we were pushing to have a meeting with you early this week, and maybe the other two if necessary. And it worked out that, once they committed to a timeframe, that Aldoc is, is gonna accept, monitor closely to make sure they live up to their end of the bargain of getting it done, they said that meeting would no longer be necessary, so therefore.
Yeah, I spoke with them yesterday, but we're supposed to have a meeting this morning at eight o'clock.
That's right.
But I was prepared for that meeting.
Oh, I bet you were.
You know, uh, because, yeah, 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 here and there, don't, you know, it, it don't, it don't, it don't work.
But I'll say this, because, you know, a lot of people don't believe it when you take it for yourself, but, I, I, it's not this body's fault, it's not Aldoc's fault. And, and let's be honest, in fairness even to the contractors and the consultants, we live in a post-COVID world, and you, there are materials you can't get right now, especially, and you know that, in the line of work you're in, you can't, there are parts you can't get as quickly. She used to tell me when I was a kid, you'd go down to Ed Trolls Hardware Store, and they'd re-had it that day, most time it did, if you didn't, have it for you tomorrow. Well, now, you sometimes wait weeks or months, but, that's what we've been working on, or one of many things we've been working on for the last couple of weeks, and I was giving the same dates you were giving, and so we're sitting watch closely and make sure that happens.
I'm gonna read this letter that come with me, uh, which that's who, that's who we're, that's who the insurance, who we got our insurance with. Says this got off, this, let me see, look the date on this, July the seventeenth. Just got off the phone with Tim Coker, CPM, to check status on both products, red light replacement. All of the phones are in, and have been for, have been for a couple of months. The original design approved by Caitlin Morgan with, with DOT, which is Aldoc, Department of Transportation. But then she went on, went out on maternity leave, and her replacement asked for various changes. I know Luke can relate to this, and I know Todd can relate to this, and I think the council can, when you start making changes, that throws everything kind of sometimes almost back to square one. But the, 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 the original design was approved, but the, the lady that took the other lady's place asked for various changes. That has been completed, and the DOT has now approved the project with the changes made. DOT's suggestions, various vendors were contacted in regards to the installation of the red light. Of course, this installation is critical due to controlling traffic for two separate highways. Tim, as in Tim Coker with the, you know, CPM, has been in contact with two vendors, Hattaway Brothers and Stone and Sons Electrical, has, and has followed up with each of them as late as the past Saturday, June, June the fifteenth. Both should be submitting fi, financial plans, cost, and their expected timeline when they can start, and how long the project will take shortly. It's just stuff like that, and then they come back, Caitlin is back now, Caitlin Morgan is back, and she's the one that said that we started by September 11, or finished by September 11. That being said, Al, the, the Aldoc Department, Aldoc, Mr. Phil has said we'll give them to that time, and not the state's gonna take over and make, make the decision as to what, who, when, or, instead of leaving it to everybody else, they're gonna step in and make it, make things go as smoothly as they're getting done. So we're looking, they look forward to nine eleven of this year, it being completed. September the eleventh is what they say started or completed now, I don't think it takes less than a day. But there's gotta be a certain kind of signs that they use for traffic, they gotta be approved this way, they were, I mean, it's, it's, it's just so many movement components with it. I mean, as early as, as even as this week, there was wrong color, we had wrong color lights or something that had to switch, but they hadn't stopped. It was, it was a whole lot easier when we beat it out with plan, had an engineered plan, and said, "Here, tell the salesperson," but, and, and when you go trying to replace it through insurance companies and this and that, it's a little bit different, Father. Trying to match this and trying to do that. But I was going to, you didn't have that, did you? Well, Gina, Keith.
Just that color down there on house.
Yep, I talked to Rob today. What we're gonna do, because we're not getting response like we need to out of the people that owns that, owns that property there now. We're gonna take that pipe, I think Rob met with Luke, or has spoken to Luke, no, Rob met with, uh, Robert Norris, the one that put that pipe in, Luke, I don't know. I was, we actually had talked to him today about that project, uh, which Luke here is kind of oversees a lot of stuff for us when we do that, but, with that pipe, we're gonna take that pipe loose where it comes, where, where it comes onto the road there, we're gonna take that loose, where that pipe's covered up, we're gonna open that pipe up, just let that, not have a box there. We'll build a box later, once they, if they ever do get that big, that should solve the problem for right now. What water comes down through there, go down through the pipe going to go, instead of running over the pipe going into the property owners. So we're gonna, I'll talk to Rob this morning about that. That's how we're gonna fix that project for right now.
Where's that located, that way?
I hear B and B. If you look, when you go by there, you can see where the wash, well, they've got, they've got rock piled up here, but they've got a big wash here that's just letting the water. We fill that, we fill that ditch with our pipe, tie their pipe, the state's pipe, I guess it is, comes out on the road, or whatever, comes out on that parking lot goes, it's tied into our pipe, and there's no box there, so we're gonna open that frame up, there needs to be a box, but they don't need to be a box until they fix their problem. That sound okay, you probably, what are we gonna do that, Luke? What we're gonna have to do, pretty much. You had questioned me. I don't think there's any other one. If nobody else has got any, I mean, I'm not missing anything, you know, Brett. We still have a unit out, we still have an air-conditioned unit problem at the park, at the commuter center. We've got a fifteen-ton unit, current, how big a ton?
I'm not sure. It's the biggest unit that we have.
I think it's a fifteen-ton unit, but we talked about putting two sevens or doing something. We've still got, we've got a major unit out there, but it's on, it's working half way. Yes, it's working half right now. Uh, I've talked with one AC company, and we talked about putting two, seven, or seven, seven-half tons, seven-ton units, or whatever, in there, that way, if you, it wouldn't, I mean, be catastrophic if it broke down, that way you'd still have service if, if one of them went out, instead of having one major fifteen-ton.
Oh, what is that, you, I thought we already replaced all of them.
That's the oldest one, didn't it?
Well, that was, that's in the, the last one that we put in, that was one of them, but it's, it's been out of warranty for two or three years now. But that one, it didn't work right from the beginning, it wasn't, it wasn't good.
Uh, I need the councilmen to know that I'm working on that project. Uh, Morgan, don't, uh, you don't have to go ahead to fix this, uh, if anything out there, so it should be, you know, on that project here pretty soon. Yeah. Seems like there's something else that we had going on at the, uh, park. Yeah, oh, yeah. If we get any bids, we still haven't got any prices or bids on the concrete. I've reached out to a couple of places for that tennis court slash pickleball court. The council, there's, the council, remember the discussions that we had on that work? We went ahead and okayed for them to hire that company to do that, but we, we're gonna put the concrete work out for bid, because it's separate from that price that they give us to finish that project. So, we didn't get anybody to bid, so what I'm gonna need to do is I'm gonna try to reach out myself and get three competitive bid. Because we didn't have any bids submitted, I'm gonna reach out, try to get three competitive bids, and then, I'm gonna ask, I guess I'll ask the council to accept that bid, I'm gonna bring it back to you, uh, I'm gonna reach out to three different concrete people to do this project, since we didn't get in the way to bid. See if I can get three processes, and then I'll bring it back to the council. We've got, uh, we just have to have, we just put a, have to put a unit in at the new PD for, with the courtroom, PD, not the PD, but the courtroom, at the new facility, so we, I'm gonna be getting bids, I'm gonna get three bids, competitive bids on that, and I'll bring that back. Uh, for the next, try to have all that, because they, they, they need to be moving forward with that. And the construction, the new construction. How, how far along are you for us, are we gonna need to bid out? We need to look at that and get that, the major part of that project bid it out. Have you got any scope of work, have you, have you got a scope of work put out to bid, to bid that out?
Uh, just the, the rough drawing that I showed you.
That's something you can look at for me, Luke? If you will, Greg, let him explain that, and let me see if that's something, because I think I'm gonna need to put that out for bid. If nobody, I'm gonna give you a little bit of time to think right there, I'm gonna go back, before we do accounts payable, we can go back down to old business, anybody thinks of anything else. I'm gonna go back to item number three, Greg Fannin there is, is here, if you wanna say a few words, Gary, I'll go back to you there on the, just back on the agenda there, if you wanna come up and hear the speaker, whatever you want to do.
I'll just stand right here, and I'll keep it super short, we'll shoot for brief, as of five o'clock this evening, I'm an official candidate for House 16. I look forward to working with that gentleman over there. Yes, y'all are married to Fayette County, whether you like it or not, you are married, and so, let's make it a good marriage. And, uh, I want to, uh, I wanna do things, uh, uh, to help Winfield, because I believe Winfield has got a, an unbelievable potential for growth, right here on top of I-22. I really think y'all can become a, a regional area for retail and, and several things. I'll tell you a little bit about myself. Um, I grew up just down the road, in a little spot, uh, outside of Oakman, Alabama. My mom was born in Berry, my family helped fail Fayette County, my family helped fail Walker County. Currently, I serve as your commissioner of coal mines, I spent twenty-six years in the military. So, uh, I have a little bit of experience, uh, with the legislature. I spent two years, uh, after the first Gulf War, the military let me go to come home to study with a man by the name of Albert Brewer. So I spent two years with Governor Brewer at Sanford University, whom I loved and liked a, uh, he was a mentor, he was a friend, he was a great human being, and he loved Alabama. And, uh, I know and, and thank each and every one of you for serving this community, and I hope to serve our community and our state with honor and distinction. I'll be around afterwards, I'd love to talk with each and every one of you, and, uh, give you my card, y'all see the, my press release is tomorrow. Uh, if you've got, al.com did not tell me, but today, um, my press release came out, al.com and 1819 News. So, again, I am Greg Fannin, I'm the only one, and the, uh, only one around, F-A-N-I-N. And I appreciate it, if you could pick up your phone, if, I know that most of y'all don't live in 16, but, again, uh, some, so many folks from 16 come here to work. And it's, and we're built, we're a part of this community and want to stay that way. God bless each and every one of you.
How's anybody, oh, God, you know, but, I need to ask for motion to, uh, pay the bill.
Got a motion, Keith, second, and Tim, all in favor?
State Bank and Trust has been invested in Winfield and Marion County for more than a century. And today, we remain deeply committed to meeting the needs of local families and businesses with excellent financial products and friendly down-home service.
But more than that, we're dedicated to supporting the growth, success, and well-being of our community as a whole. Because when it comes right down to it, there's nothing more important than community.
And just like our outstanding city officials, police and fire departments, you can count on State Bank and Trust to help make Winfield and Marion County a great place to live for everyone who calls this area home.
Hello, everyone, this is Chuck from Span Hardware in Winfield, Alabama. Good to be with you today, and just want to let you know, we've got some new things this year for the spring season. As you can see, uh, steel now houses a lawn mower. We're gonna have a full line of the steel zero-turn motors, we have a full line of the steel wheat trimmer and chainsaws, just about anything you need to maintain your home this spring and summer, from lawn and garden equipment to paint to hardware, anything you need. Come see us, we'll help you if we can, thank you.
This is Eric Simmons from Furniture Depot. We have a store in Geouen and Fayette, we've been serving the people of Northwest Alabama for twenty-three some odd years. We'd like to be your furniture store, if you'd let us, and we'd like to thank you for your business this past year, and invite you to come and shop with us this coming year, and for the years to come. Uh, Merry Christmas and have a Happy New Year.
Hello, Lee Hines here, owner-operator of Alexander's Heating and Air Conditioner. We've been family-owned and operated since 1954, proudly serving Marion, Fayette, and Lamar County. We are carrier factory authorized dealers, but service all makes and models. We specialize in residential and light commercial HVAC systems.
So as we get ready to enter another hot Alabama summer, please remember Alexander's Heating and Air for all your HVAC needs.
Tom Bigby Electric Cooperative was formed for the need for electricity to the local citizens that were living in the rural areas of Marion, Lamar, and portions of Fayette Counties. This line consisted of 12 miles and 22 consumers on the road from Guen to Sullivan. Between then and now, there has been a lot of hard work and dedication from a great number of people to make this cooperative what it is today. Tom Bigby Electric Corporation would like to thank each member. You can contact us today at 205-921-6712.
Your story starts at Bevel State Community College. Whether you are just starting out or starting over, Bevel State has an opportunity that is right for you, with five locations serving seven counties. You don't have to go far to start your own success story. Plus, with tuition lower than four-year colleges, you won't need to spend more for a great education. Visit us online at bscc.edu to learn about your options for seamless academic transfer and high-demand career tech and health science offerings. Let us help you tell your story.
Enjoy our amazing onsite restaurant and bar with a lunch buffet every Sunday. Relax with a quick getaway with your family and make a splash in our outdoor pool. Book your next event with us, call us at 205-468-4625.
At Bowen Funeral Home, we understand the importance of a personal commitment to provide quality services and products with value to meet every family's need. You'll find very caring professionals that truly desire to offer dignified service and true value that families need and desire during the loss of their loved one. With our newly renovated facilities, services, and quality merchandise, you can rest assured that we stand ready to meet the needs of your family in honoring lives lived. Bowen Funeral Home is located at 981 Alabama Highway 253, just south of Winfield High School. Call Tommy Bowen, certified funeral service practitioner, at 205-487-4327.